...great need to recognize things that will absolutely undercut our ability to do our job. Thomas appeared to be referring to a New York Times report in June 2015 that detailed how American intelligence agencies had extracted valuable information. New insight yielded by the seized trove, four to seven terabytes of data, according to one official, include how the organization's shadowy leader, al-Baghdadi, operates and tries to avoid being tracked by coalition forces, reported the New York Times. And Thomas believes that leak into their opportunity in 2015 to kill Baghdadi. Once the Obama administration's bureaucracy, the other, the Democrat Party media. So what did the commander in chief do? Donald Trump? He's a good sixth sense, a good gut when it comes to these things. He ordered the military to get him. He didn't tell Pelosi because he didn't want it to leak to the New York Times or anybody else. All the time, nor do we trust the media. The media don't care about America. The media care about the Democrat Party and themselves. President did exactly the right thing. I'll be right back. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to ask you a question. Did you know withdrawing your cash from the bank can be very risky? That's right, I said it. Let me educate you about this. Banks are now required to spy on us for the government and to report any behavior they think is suspicious. Man, oh man. I was shocked as I read the secret war on cash from Swiss America. This new war against cash is really a war against the Constitution, against all freedom-loving Americans. So listen to me. You must read the secret war on cash. Get your free copy, free copy, by calling 800-289-2646, 800-289-2646, or visit swissamerica.com. Now, this war on cash is growing daily, and it also includes all forms of digital money. So please, get and read the secret war on cash, free to my listeners, by calling right now, 800-289-2646, 800-289-2646. Current events and news that affects you. Brian Kilmeade. We're there and will handle them. And we should work on some type of piece about de-escalation. We have no right to say anything to the president because they were the ones in charge when President Obama did the point of the red line. The president should understand this meeting and send a landing grab. Can't support this, you might have made a mistake. Brian Kilmeade, 8 to 11 here on City Talk 12:30.
Ugh, it was embarrassing.
Yeah, I mean, we were all sent to buy a car, until we sat down with a finance guy.
He credit saved us.
Right?
We do, our credit wasn't great, but between this and getting rejected for a credit card, enough is enough.
I did my homework and found that CreditRepair.com has a hotline to help people like us repair our credit and boost our scores, and that their past clients saw their credit score jump at every... I'm in a dead zone, but I'm going to the police department right now for that forum. Yeah, it starts in about five minutes, so... Nah, I'm free after that, so... Okay, I'll call you when I'm done. Okay, bye-bye.
You're gonna do the two minutes.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started now. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jody Quakenbush. I'm a member of Network Three. On behalf of Network One, Two, and Three, we appreciate everybody coming out tonight and welcome you to the forum. As a reminder, election is Tuesday, November 5th, so if you would like to vote early, you can do that at the courthouse anytime between now and the 4th. On the 1st and the 4th, they're open until 5 o'clock. And then on the 5th, of course, you'll have to go to your polling location. For those of you that are not familiar with the Councilless Network groups, in 1979, a few women created a professional group of women and named it Network One. The women in the group had to live or work in Councilless. This allowed the women a support system and networking opportunity at a professional level in the community of Councilless. After several years, Network One created Network Two to allow the women to be similar-aged and of similar life standards. And after some time, Network Three was formed. The groups meet monthly. So that's a little bit about us. Now I'm going to go over the rules for tonight. The questions for tonight's forum were submitted by people in the audience as they came in, so the council candidates have not been given these questions in advance. Open dialogue from the audience... Open dialogue from the audience will not be allowed during the forum. We want the candidates to have an opportunity to address your question without interruption. Each candidate will be given two minutes to introduce themselves. Each candidate will given three minutes to answer the questions. We will rotate who starts the questions, so the same person isn't starting each time. We want to keep everything positive. We don't want any cheering or booing from the audience, and there's also no rebuttal or follow-up questions from the council, or from the candidates. The timekeeper is sitting in the corner over there, and she will hold up a yellow sign, a green sign when you start, and a yellow sign when you have 30 seconds remaining. The red sign means your time is up. We would like you to be respectful of the time. The yellow sign is your indication that it's time to wrap things up, and the red sign is your indication that it's time to stop talk. We'd like to thank you in advance for your cooperation on this. All six candidates were invited to the forum tonight. We understand that there may have been prior obligations by candidates. For that reason, Roger Sandow was unable to attend tonight, so he has submitted a statement that I will read as his introduction and closing statement. Any brief questions? Okay, I will read Roger's statement, and then there's a microphone here, we'll pass along, and we'll just do the introductions, starting with Deb and down the road. Thank you for Network One, Two, and Three for putting on a forum. I received the invite to forum one week ago today. I have a work commitment that was scheduled long before this was sent out to us that I was unable to reschedule on such short notice. When I received the email, I called Starland, the president of Network Three, to ask some questions about why such short notice, who was involved with the group, and what these groups represent. She asked me to email as she was not at her desk. I have provided Jody with the emails if anyone wants to see them. My second response was not returned by email. Over the phone, she told me that she needed to be upfront with me and that of the three groups, two candidates were in two of the three groups, but this would not be a problem. I asked if she thought it would be fair, and she said absolutely. In my email, I asked for a list of the members of all three network groups, and was informed the list was not available for public release. I found this to be a little unsettling. Why would a group put on a public event forum to help the citizens learn of the candidates of city council and not tell us who was involved and behind the event? Let me tell you a little bit about my campaign. I graduated from Yale in 2004, and graduated from Blair Cliff University in 2008. My family opened Samuel Brothers Sign Company in 1985 and is still in business today. I am married with two stepsons, Aiden and Coleman, and my wife Jenny, and I have a daughter named Jordan. I ran my campaign in 2015 on investing in the youth of our community, and I went out to become a mentor with the teammates. Investing in the youth and keeping our kids here at perpetuation and having them come back after college is what will grow our tax base and increase sense of pride in our community. I want the community to know they can trust me and that I will take the time to listen to their views, even if it's not the same as mine. I 100% will not have the same views as all of the constituents, but we disagree without being disagreeable. I will not make you feel as though, because we disagree, your view is as important as mine. As a small business owner, I know to get things done. I want our community to be a better place for my kids and grandkids when I'm gone. Being on council is a great responsibility that I do not take lightly. I do my homework and am prepared. I listen to the constituents and businesses in our community. I do what I feel is best for Councilless as a whole. When re-elected, I will continue to work hard for the community and be the voice of the people and the businesses in Councilless, and I ask for your vote on November 5th. Thank you, Roger Sandow.
Thank you, and thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. Well, as you know, my name is Deb Bass, and I'm running for city council. This is the first time that I am running for a public office, but I have served on a number of boards, and I bring quite a bit of community volunteerism to the table. I thought carefully about my campaign slogan, working hard for Councilless, and what does that mean to me? That's a phrase that many people use. Well, first of all, I've been preparing for this race since May of this past year. I've had over 80 business meetings with department heads, nonprofit leaders, visionaries, and then I've been walking neighborhoods, canvassing neighborhoods. I've lost count. But I can tell you that I feel like I've been very impressed by the individuals that I've met. They've been very open and very supportive, and I really appreciate this entire effort that I've gone through. Just some history, I came to Councilless in 1971. I attended Jimmy Anderson, excuse me, School of Nursing. I worked at the hospital for 11 years, but I always had an itch to be in business. Went back to school at Iowa Western, I started there, graduated from Grace Plan. My degree is in healthcare administration. Started an IT consulting company in 1993 called Bass &amp; Associates. We grew that to over 110 employees, and then sold that in 2001 to Hunt Health Systems. That company is still in existence today. It's called Harpinger Partners, and it's doing very well. From there, I was recruited by a group of individuals to start a health information exchange for the state of Nebraska called Ne-Hi. If you go to your doctor, you should be asked if you are willing to agree to share your information in Ne-Hi. That has gone on. I retired from that over a year ago, and I'm very anxious to serve the people of Councilless and excited to be a part of the Neighborhood Association grant that we'll be talking about later. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Joe Casalove. As we discussed in the last handful of forums, I'm from Councilless. Been here my whole life. My folks are from Councilless, most of my family is. I went off to college in Sioux City. I thought it'd be fun to triple major in computer science, political science, and business administration, and pick up a legal studies minor for the extra, just because I needed to, right? I moved back to Councilless, and I couldn't find work. Actually, I took a job as a temp working for the city. I was running a grinder on Madison Ave, grinding off the pavement markings, when I finally got a call for a job as a bank teller. So I went through all this, going to come back, and the only I could find in Councilless is a bank teller's job. Not that there's anything wrong with bank tellers, it was a good gig, but we need to do more, we need to have more options. I want my kids to get done with school, get out of the service, get done with whatever it is they're gonna do, and come back and want to be in Councilless, not be like my sister, who is never coming back. She went off to college, moved to Chicago, and is now in Los Angeles. She loves the big city, and there's not a lot for her to do here. That's a huge problem in my mind, so it's one of the things we need to work on, and it's part of the reason, well, almost entirely the reason, you know, is that I'm running. I want my kids to be back. I want them to love where they're at. I want them to have pride where they're from, and I want them to advance Councilless. The first event we had of this whole thing was a meet and greet, and I talked to some folks about long-term, and they said, Joe, it's good, you're looking for 15, 20 minutes, or 15, 20 years ahead. I said, no, guys, that's short-term. We need to be looking 50 years ahead, 100 years ahead. What are we gonna be from now until the end of time? Longer-term, that's what we gotta do. Bye.
My name is Chad Hannan. I am a fifth-generation, proud Councilless resident. Graduated from St. Albert, met my high school sweetheart, Lindsay, there. We have three beautiful kids, eight, five, and three. After I graduated from St. Albert, I went to Iowa Western, kind of like Joe said here. Work was a little bit tough to come by. I ended up going to trade school after that, turning out as a journeyman plumber until the housing economy crashed. And then picked myself up with the help of a lot of friends and family, and started building a career in business that I'm very proud of. I've been a part of small business, nonprofits, startups, and most recently, I'm employed at Ameristar as their supply chain manager. So using over a decade of purchasing and management experience is kind of how I would like to apply that fiscal responsibility to the operations of the city, and my responsibility as a city council member. Community volunteerism is very important to me. I volunteer on the board of the Councilless Chamber of Commerce. I serve as their secretary on their executive board. I also am a founding member of the 712 Initiative, something that I'm very proud of. They do a lot of really good things in this community, and it's not just focused on development. We also do a lot of neighborhood placemaking and neighborhood work, and I'm very proud of my involvement there. I made the decision of running for city council very difficult for me, knowing that I probably wouldn't be able to continue on those. All things considered, this has been an eye-opening experience, meeting new people, not just the folks up here, but the folks in the community, and I, more than anything, since I have the yellow folder right now, thank you for coming to the forum. Thank you for educating yourself. Even if I don't earn one of your votes, I really appreciate the fact that you're here and you're willing to listen, and I hope to earn your vote on November 5th, but if not, I appreciate the fact that you're voting on November 5th. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm councilmember Nate Watson, and first of all, I want to thank the sponsors this day, and it's vitally important that the voters have a chance to hear from all the different candidates. I was born and raised in and around Councilless. I went away to school, got trained as a historian and a political scientist, and then got my doctorate in the law, and then my post-doctorate, legislative practice, and spent some time interning in the British Parliament, the United States House of Representatives, the Iowa Senate, and the Iowa Ethics and Campaign Disclosure Board. So I have some background in how to bring a knowledge of lawmaking to the council. After school, I came back primarily to raise that young woman there, my niece, who's now 16 K late, along with my mother, Cindy Mascher Watson, who's gone to nurse for over 45 years with Jenny in our community, and they're truly the inspirations of my life and why I do what I do. I took a job at a local law firm, working mostly in insurance defense, but really, my passion is more community and grassroots neighborhood building. So I got involved in co-founding my own neighborhood, Fairmont Park, in 2007, and founded the Downtown Neighborhood Alliance, which at the time was the five downtown neighborhood associations, helping folks find their voice, find a way to interact with government, one another. And then throughout the years, I've been able to help with over 16 neighborhood groups throughout our community, both with their legal paperwork for free, getting started, as well as how an individual works together with other folks to get things done. In my time on the council, I've been able to bring a lot of expertise. First time we've rewritten our rules since World War II. It's the first time we've rewritten our housing code, and I want to continue the work to continue to cut the red tape, because I believe experience and individuals who show up and do their homework are important, and I ask for your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Network ladies, for holding us tonight. It's really a great opportunity to, not just for our network groups, but also to bring in the public, to have an opportunity to hear from all the candidates. I'm Sharon White. I am serving on my ninth year on the city council. I have kind of that odd number of years because I served one-year appointed term to fill a vacancy. Since I've been on the council, I've really enjoyed doing the work. Prior to being on the city council, I served on a lot of boards and commissions, but on city boards, I was on the Human Relations Commission, and then I spent seven years on the Planning Commission, which really did help a lot in being able to kind of hit the ground running once I was appointed to the council. So much of what we do comes from the Planning Commission to us, so that was very helpful. Currently, I also serve at Advanced Southwest Iowa. I was the president from its inception through last year, so about five years. It's the economic development branch of the city and the county, and we have, as an organization, put $125 million worth of value on the tax bill since the start. And I also serve on the Children's Square Board. I'm currently the secretary. Another one of my passions is the children in our community. I would really like to continue working on the council. One of the things I've been working on, honestly, for eight years, is trying to get a park in the east end of our community where the newer subdivisions are that are not served. And I am happy to announce that we have an eight-and-a-half acre parcel that has been donated, so I'll probably talk about that a little bit later. But again, thanks for coming out tonight.
Okay, so we can sit back down to Deb. We'll do, start the first question with Deb, and then Joe, you'll start the second question, okay? First question, for what purposes would you vote to override the new 2% limit passed by the Iowa Legislature last year?
Again, I'm not a real proponent or a fan of the Iowa Legislature imposing laws on individual cities. And so, there's all kinds of reasons. First of all, health insurance. All employers are grappling with understanding a good way to address in ever-rising healthcare expenses, and health insurance could easily push us up to that limit. There's other issues that could come up that are not part of the budget that might be a surprise and unexpected, and I think that the city council in past years has been very responsible, and they've worked hard to make certain that they control those costs and expenses, but that there's times when things do pop up, workman comp claims, a myriad of issues that could occur that are not foreseen, and that a city needs to be able to respond to those in a diligent manner, look at the options, but if necessary, vote to override the 2%.
Sorry.
So the 2% increase law that was passed by the state legislature is a bad law. Allowing it to be overridden was a good fix, but obviously not ideal. The 2% from what I understand, it was more or less picked out of thin air. There's not really much support why they went with 2% exactly. Now, that being said, inflation ranges right around that same amount, as Deb said. Healthcare costs, insurance costs, as, I mean, I tell insurance every day, it goes up all the time. If we don't allot for that, again, 2% doesn't leave us much leeway. The price of gasoline that put in our police cars and our fire trucks varies greatly. You know, any number of things. We have heavy snow this year, and we use lots of salt. Those costs are incurred, that affects the budget. So to limit ourselves to a simple 2% increase really does nothing more than allow for, in the first place, an increase that would cover the inflation rate. Now, say inflation were to change, now what do we do? Because now we're stuck to this hard 2%. So there's a great many things that would allow someone, you know, to want to override this and increase. I think the best example was given, you know, by the mayor a couple weeks ago at a meeting where someone had asked the same question, and he was kind of trying to help explain it to some folks, but simply the health insurance costs alone have gone up exponentially as of late, along with all the other things that I had mentioned, you know? So I would have no problem putting, you know, our brains first and actually taking a real look at the numbers, because it all comes down to a case-by-case basis, city by city. Our city should be able to look at our own budget, plan accordingly, and do as we see fit without Des Moines telling us what it is we have to do. So again, that allowing of the supermajority is definitely something I would be in favor of using.
So I don't necessarily agree with it, but it's the legislation that's in front of us. So, you know, I think the first thing it does, it puts fiscal responsibility first and foremost, and it's on the council's plate to work with the mayor and try to be as fiscally responsible with the tax dollars that we have, and make the best decisions that we can in a situation where we would have to go above the 2%. That's why the supermajority override is there. And I like to think that when faced with an issue, the council can work together, find a resolution, and find some common place with administration to get that taken care of. We could all speak in hypotheticals all day long, you know, I think it is a little bit scary as we walk into this first budget year with this facing us, but at the end of the day, you know, collaboration and exhausting all avenues and all resources to make sure that if we can budget appropriately and avoid any need to go above the 2%, then great. If not, then it's on the council to work together, pass the supermajority with the administration's help.
No, you're fine. You know, the voters thought so much and think so much about local control. We put it into the state constitution above the grips of politicians in Des Moines. In 1968, we just had our 50th anniversary of that constitutional amendment, and in the spirit of it, it is being damaged by folks who are playing politics at the state level, and it allows individuals to hijack a budget if they so choose, to stop a budget from passing if they want to play politics on the local level. So it's a really bad idea. You ought to be able, the folks you elect to be on the council are the ones in human power to make the decisions locally for you, not folks in Des Moines. And 2%, I would disagree with the characterization of it's ever going above 2% is fiscally irresponsible, just the cost of health insurance. And I know this in my day job. In my day job, I'm deputy director of Nebraska Medicaid, so I have 800 employees in our executive team overseas, and an annual budget of $2.1 billion. And of that, we mostly use it for a quarter of a billion very poor children, disabled, elderly people for their healthcare. But a lot of it is also, a fair chunk of it is also for staff salary and benefits. And so I have to tell you, I don't know about you, but my insurance is going up more than 2% a year, unfortunately. I imagine a lot of heads shaking ass. So frankly, it doesn't solve anything. It's great political point scoring by folks in Des Moines, and it allows individuals locally to try to hold up a budget. I'll just mention this year, the most important thing that a council does, and I've participated now in eight budgets, and I know councilmember White has participated in nine now, it is the most solemn duty we have on your behalf. And so every year, it involves going and meeting with department heads and truly looking to see what needs to be done, and doing a lot of our own research, really. And so, for example, this year, early in the year, three of the five of us, two chose not to participate at all in any budget preparation meetings with department heads, and just voted, I guess, without looking. But three of us put a lot of time into it, did our homework, and so that's why I know that the cost of insurance is going up, the cost of salt to the streets is certainly going up more than 2%. And so it's just vitally important, as you look at these sorts of issues, that you do what is the right thing, not always necessarily what is the politically popular thing or the thing that will get you votes. And so it may not be the best political answer to give you, but it's the truth. Those sorts of limits don't really do anything other than make it difficult to get the work done on your behalf. So I'm not in favor of them, but I'll continue to be prudent as we pass budgets, and I'll override it necessary, because our streets and your safety are more important than my political future.
So I think it's been stated that the state definitely overstepped their bounds, and this isn't the first time in the last few years that our right-to-home rule has really been diminished by these types of actions by the state. But I would tell you that in the nine years that I've been on council, the budget has passed by a supermajority each and every time. I can't think of a time that it did not. But I would also tell you that I don't know that there's been a budget that wouldn't have been higher than 2%. When we look at, we have to give wage increases to our employees. We have to, you know, cover those increases in health insurance. The increases in insurance on our properties, city hall, the police department, all these things go up, just say your house. So the 2% again wasn't even reasonable, but I would tell you that I don't look for it to be a problem. I've never seen it happen that we didn't have a supermajority vote on the budget. And again, I think that anybody that sits down and really goes over that, current administration has done really a good job in trying to make it a lot more understandable for the public to read. It's always online, it's always available to look at, and I think if you... And I think if you go in and look at that, you'll see that over time, those numbers have not gone up where we could avoid it. So it's those costs that you can't control that tend to go up. But I think we've done a really great job on our budget in recent years. Again, your levy hasn't gone up. We've done the very best we can to hold that levy. I know there's been a letter to the editor recently that we need to look at increasing our levy. I think that, you know, if you can do the job and you can find those ways to save money without doing those increases, you're doing the best you can for taxpayers. So would I, I would, of course, if we had to increase the levy, I would look to that. But I think we've done a great job on holding line all these years. And again, I wouldn't expect it to be any different this budgeting session than it's been the last nine years.
We have, we got lots of questions, so I appreciate that from everybody. We're not going to get through all of them tonight, but we'll just keep going one by one through the questions. Joe will be the first one to answer this one. How do you propose to handle the homeless problem and what are the entities you suggest partnering with?
So, good question. Good place to be in actually, for a set question. The last couple of months, myself and some, some of the others up here and some of the local businesses and the local providers here in town have been meeting in this room, you know, once a month. I, we touched on it a little bit in the last forum. We've been partnering with the Council of Ust Police Department to try and find good ways to, to approach this, this issue. Everyone that is considered homeless or, or housing insecure is not all, they're not all there for the same reason, right? And that's one of the things we have been discussing. So their needs are varied greatly. There is an issue in Council of Ust with, you know, drug use. There is an issue in Council of Ust and across the nation with unchecked, you know, mental illness. And then lastly, there's folks that are just kind of down on their luck looking for a hand up, you know? I believe one of the providers the other day said that a lot of those folks in that position will come into the system and come back out of it within 30 days and never return. And, and that's great. That is exactly what those services are there for. The problem that arises is that very first group sometimes in that they become somewhat detrimental to, to local business and safety and things like that. And so what we've been working with in our discussions, rather, we've kind of gone over how whether or not someone has a residence, a place to put their head at night is really not our issue here in Council of Ust as much. I mean, obviously it is, it's good God fearing Christians and we want to help everyone. Yes, of course. But the problem that the, you know, businesses have and the schools have things like that are people engaging in activity that is not what you would consider legal activity, I guess you'd say. Drinking and drug use and sleeping in the parks, things like that that have been causing much issue in and out of the dumpsters, causing messes, things like that behind businesses. Overall liability, if someone were to get hurt in any of those instances or places, guess what? Someone's insurance has to cover that, whether it's a business or a city. So continued partner, partnership with the police department. And they've got a pilot program in the middle of town that they're looking to expand to other areas of town. I think will be really successful as long as we continue to work with the providers here in Council of Ust that we have and our police department, our business owners, and our local neighborhoods as well. I think we have a really good shot to do what is best for all the residents of Council of Ust, ones with homes and ones without.
So I think the, the first step has been taken, right? So there's a committee of, led by a police chief and many residents, both business owners and just residents of the community. I think that's a great first start. It starts with collaboration and it starts with open and honest communication. The solution, while I don't think it's been identified yet, but I would hope that it would include relying on folks with expertise in this arena. I'm not an expert in homelessness or near homelessness and how to provide the resources that those folks need, but we need to rely on the experts. There are plenty of people who know what they're doing in this community that we can rely on, what, what it is that they know and how can we take the resources that we have available and either expand on them or make sure that they're provided to the people that maybe they don't know that they're available. What I don't think that we can do is, we cannot continue to believe that this isn't an issue. So I'm hoping that by creating this task force or community group, it brings some awareness to this and I hope that we start to see some action soon on it. It's a real issue. We see it at my work all the time. We're, we're constantly having to talk to folks sleeping on benches or using the showers that shouldn't be. What, the solution I'm hoping to see is not only compassion, but common sense as well. A lot of these folks didn't put, necessarily want to put themselves in this situation. And I hope that whatever the resolution is, we, we treat all folks of Council of Ust with the compassion that we would like to treat each other with.
I work in the issue of housing, food, and medical insecurity in my day job and throughout the years have been pleased to work with a lot of neighborhood groups and other community nonprofit groups in this space dealing with this issue. There is not a one size fits all or perfect solution to this or probably anything, but certainly not this issue. I think we have to level set and admit that. But that doesn't mean we don't try. Because after all these, our fellow human beings, and being poor is not a crime and is not indicative of whether you are a good or bad person. There are plenty of people who have far more means who aren't good people. There are plenty of poor folks who are good people. So I think we need to be very careful in this conversation not to malign folks. And so I appreciate the tone of the discussion this evening. There are four things that can be done in this, on this issue. The first is to continue to fund our, our local community partners, the individuals who are doing this day in and day out, the MICA houses of the world and all the other organizations. We, in my years on the council, I've consistently supported funding their efforts several times through the various federal grants we receive, but not always. And I, I've always voted, I've never once voted for that fund or voted against that funding, and I've always voted to increase it and would continue to do so. Secondly, we have to continue our partnership with the local schools because a lot of times children get into a situation where that if you're not able to get them onto a path of life success, they do not realize the God given potential they have and the ability to, to do things in their lives to the greatest lengths of their talents. And so that's something we have to continue to partner with the schools with. And I continue, I pledge to continue to do so. The third thing is, and this is a critical piece, at the state legislative level and at the state executive level, we have cut significantly the mental health services in our communities throughout the state. There are a lot of people that are homeless who suffer from very difficult conditions beyond their control, who we basically pulled the rug out from underneath of them and we no longer fund them and we just say, good luck, I guess you're on your own. I don't think that that's a mark of a compassionate society or one that's looking out for the best interests of everyone. And nor is it in the end good for the taxpayers. It's far more expensive to, to deal with the aftermath of situations than it is to empower someone for their own life success. And then the fourth thing is, is I think this is probably the most critical point for all of us, me included in this room, thank you, is that we all each have our own individual obligation. We're all of us have our own specific religious beliefs or otherwise. I believe each of us all agree that we each have a moral obligation to continue, and I pledge to continue to do my part to help my fellow men and women in our community. And so that's how you do everything you can to address housing insecurity. And I think God continue to do that, and I pledge to do so.
So I have been attending the homeless meetings here with the committee and I've been to, I think, the last two or three months. And it is, it's a nice group of people that are all looking at it, from business owners who are providing every day, but mostly the providers, the people that do it 24/7. And I can just tell you, as a city council person, I can always cast those votes for financial support from block grant funds or, you know, those type of things and have always been in favor of that. But as a city council person, there, there's not a silver bullet. There's nothing we can as a council do that the people that are doing it full time 24 hours a day are not already doing and trying to accomplish. We got an email, the committee got an email today that goes back in the reports from 1984 about the homeless problem in Council of Ust and how severe it was. So it's certainly not a new problem. You just have to watch the evening news. It's certainly not just Council of Ust, it's a nationwide problem. I would tell you that I, in addition to the mental health, we have closed, in our state, there's very little available for drug rehabilitation. If you have substance abuse problems, which makes up a portion of our homeless population, you don't have a lot of options. There's really nowhere. If you're the parent of one of these children, there's very little available to you. So again, we have to, and I think it's really good when the council can come together and support those changes at a state level and lobby as a city to see these changes that will help all of our community. So I would definitely continue to do that. I will continue to do the things I've always done to support the less fortunate in our community. And I am very pleased that there's been a lot of compassion surrounding this. There had been some posts on social media that were making me nervous about people's intent with the discussion about homelessness. And when I came, started coming to the committee meetings, my fears were certainly put to rest because that's not the intent of the people that are involved.
Well, I have 25 plus years of community volunteerism. I was the chair of the Hartland Family Services Board. I'm on the Jenny Evanson board right now. And I've been very involved in the community kinds of efforts to address homelessness. And yes, it's been around for, since the 80s when I first started getting involved in some of these organizations. MICA House, Mom's Place, Hartland Family Service, they all work very hard and they're constantly looking for additional funding to extend the services. We have a, we're at capacity for our night services. The problem is the day services. They roll up the mats in the morning and then the homeless are turned out into our community. And so I have to commend the people around the table. I have been at these meetings for the last three months. And I also want to commend Chief Carmody. He was the one that stepped up and said, let's start pulling people together. They put together an educational curriculum for businesses because that's the other thing. It's a balance between enabling the homeless. You know, we all want to pull the money out of our pockets to give them some food, et cetera. But sometimes that just enables the situation. So as a business to determine what is it that you're willing to do, what you're not willing to do, educate your employees, but yes, treat them with dignity and respect. Many of them are struggling. Being very involved in healthcare, I can tell you what's happened in mental health has been horrendous. They really don't have good options out there. And same is true for, for substance abuse. So I'm very empathetic to those service providers. They work very hard, they're better, very dedicated in the work that they do, and yet I know how tough it is to raise funds for these services each and every day, each and every month, each and every year. And I think we have a great team here in Council of Ust that has come together. I also have talked to several neighborhood associations in the meetings that I've attended and some of them are interested in this curriculum. First of all, to understand the ground rules and then to work together as a neighborhood to decide how you will address and handle the situation. And I think we all have to come together. It is not an easy one to solve. It is not a quick fix like closing down the Lakin campus. I've heard people say that. You know, that will not solve our problem. We all have to come together and work very hard and to be willing to think outside the box.
Here has recently been two related letters to the editors in the Daily Non-Pro. The first letter criticized candidates for their records on meeting attendance and their lack of meeting preparedness. The second letter in yesterday's paper seemed to excuse the importance of these job responsibilities, saying that the candidate's family obligation should always be considered as a primary, as primary to their job on the city council. And thus, family always should take precedence over their responsibility associated with performing their job as an elected official. This is a two-part kind of question. What is the level of commitment to perform the job of city council if elected? What is your level of commitment to perform the job of city council if elected? Additionally, do you believe that the community involvement is one of these duties as a council member? And if so, additional, what additional areas of community involvement do you participate in?
Okay. If I forget to answer part of that, I hope you let me know. This isn't a position that I would take lightly. You know, I mean, it's a, it's an honor just to be in the final six. It's very humbling and it's not something I take lightly. While family, family is of course incredibly important, and I'm not saying that you should sacrifice family, family time, but this is part of what I believe all six of us, especially, you know, everyone that's up here, this is what we signed up for. There's a level of expectation. And, and there's also, I said in a previous forum, and I don't know if it's proper to reference back to those or not, whether we all agree or not, current council members, former council members, your mentors for folks like myself that are coming up and, and trying to learn. I don't understand everything there is to being a city council member. And if elected next week, there will be a learning curve. But what I do know is I've observed both Sharon and Nate and, and the mayor's in attendance, I'll give you a shout out back there, Brent Seagres, you know, we've watched all of the sacrifices that you've had to make throughout these years. And that's not something that I take lightly. It's not something that my wife takes lightly either. It's just a conversation that we had when we agreed that it was okay for me to, to enter into this arena. In terms of community engagement, I hope to still be involved in some aspect with the Chamber of Commerce. Small business is incredibly important to me and I would like to continue my involvement with that. I'm very involved at St. Albert and St. Pete's Church. Regardless if I'm elected or not, both of those will continue. And then 712 initiative for volunteering opportunities that we currently have or anything like that, I obviously would want to participate in their events. That being said, being on the council is going to open a lot of doors and open new relationships that I don't have just yet. So would, of course, welcome any new opportunities to get involved in the community or in any specific organization.
Doing your homework and showing up and contributing actively are vitally important things to be doing. And in my nearly eight years on the council, I've missed one meeting not related to council business. Council member White and I were in DC on business with our senators in 2013, as I recall. And I had to miss my first meeting and it really did bow me out this summer when I was stuck on a mountain in Utah at a conference for work. I assure you, it's not as exciting as it sounds. And so I had, and couldn't get cell coverage, so I had to miss a meeting. I plan my life outside of my day job during the day around this job because it is a job. And so everything else is in that time slot for meetings and other obligations of the job are secondary at that time, as they have to be. And I think you have to demand that of anyone who would represent you because being there, particularly physically being there and having picked up your packet and having reviewed it and asking the hard questions, and sometimes they are hard questions you have to ask of department heads or other folks. And the reason for that is, is you need to find out all the information, both for and against various ideas and whether there are other ways to do it. And so that's a critical part of the job. So I really think you have to be there, you have to be involved. And I assure you, family is of the highest importance to me. And family knows that this is one of my jobs and something I must do. And my niece is not a guest, so I'm grateful. And, and so I, I think it's critically important that you don't forget and cast off all other ties. I recognize that you probably have to reduce the number of other commitments you might have, and I certainly did. At one time I had 11 different boards I was on when I joined the council, so I had to scale that back a little. A lot of them I stayed on in a kind of ex officio capacity where I'm kind of like a senior advisor to them. So I don't necessarily attend every board meeting, but I am involved to the extent they'll have me and that I can make a positive difference. I continue to stay involved with the Community Alliance, the LGBT group in our community. I think it's vitally important to have equality and different voices represented in our community. I think it's vitally important to have equality and different voices represented in our community. I stay involved in my neighborhoods, associations, well as others. And also, I stay involved in the historic preservation of it, including through Preserve Council Bluffs. I think it's important that you have individuals that stay grounded, that do more than council so that they can see the impact of their decisions throughout the community. Because the easiest thing to do would be to just kind of call it in and then just go off and do whatever you want, go on vacations or just, you know, not do the job. But I think at the end of the day, whether you agree with the council person or not, if he or she puts in the time and effort and gives a reasoned decision, you can't ask more than that.
Well, like me, my world really revolves around councils. So in the nine years, I did miss one meeting. I was in this DC. I've not missed any other meetings. And that's because I schedule everything I do around being available to do that because that was a commitment I made. I knew going in that that was a commitment, and I intend to honor that if I elected again. And it isn't just showing up for a meeting or a study session. There's a lot more that goes into it. When you get those packets on Wednesday, you have to start reviewing them right away because, first of all, going to study session and asking those questions of a department head, if you haven't had a chance to meet with them ahead of time, if it's something that you really have serious questions about, you can't expect them to have all your answers just like that. So being able to at minimum email them with your concerns prior to Monday's meeting is imperative if you're going to find a solution and not have to delay action. And that is the other thing, is that generally what we do is time sensitive. So if you are not prepared to cast a vote on an issue, you can very well set a developer back by weeks. You need to be prepared to make those decisions and have talked to the people you needed to before you got to the council meeting. Study sessions are really helpful. You can get further information. But if you've got a problem with an issue, you should know that on Wednesday, Thursday at the latest. And again, you have additional meetings. When some of our projects are going on, they ask council people, "Can you please try to be at these meetings so that you understand well in advance what we're looking at?" And you can have that input. So I've always tried to do that. And I will continue to be involved in this community regardless of whether I'm on city council or I'm not. This is a community that raised me up, and this is a community where I raised my children. And I will always do my best to be involved. But I can tell you, when you're going to all of these different events, whether it's a nonprofit fundraiser, whether it's serving on boards, the information you get from people and the feedback you get from people is so much more valuable than the information that you're getting on social media. There are plenty of keyboard warriors out there that would make you believe that the world is coming to an end, that the current city council does a horrible job and the city's out of control. If you go to meetings and talk to the people who live here, work here, and contribute their time to this community, you'll find so much more information about what people want and need than you're going to find on social media.
If that's folks staying in the back of the room, there's plenty of seats up here if you want to have a seat. Okay, you didn't start me yet. This, yeah, yeah. Okay, no, I'm sorry. Because this is a topic that is near and dear to me as well. Having started businesses, a true business owner understands that the community, your business will only be as successful as the social aspects of your community. So you naturally want to be involved in serving your community. And in the end, it returns many rewards to you as a business owner. I have lived that my entire life, you know, and I have been on numerous boards that are listed in my brochure. I've served as the president of many of them. You're not asked to be the president if you don't show up prepared and ready to make a decision. I've been attending the planning commission meetings, the council meetings. I've watched the study session meetings. I've met with the department heads. And I want to say, I really commend our department heads because some of them, I've met with three or four times when some of these questions come up and I want to go back and make certain that I understand what's going on. And they've been very good to give me their time and to meet with them. So I'm really excited about our city. I think it's in a very good place. I also am involved in the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I didn't have time to mention this. Then Mayor Hanifin called me when they were going to break that off from the chamber. He said, "We need someone to help drive this. You're going to start from scratch and build a Convention and Visitors Bureau." We now have our own location down on 24th Street. We're doing great things. And we had to start from scratch, write an agreement with the city, write our bylaws, all of that. And I was glad that I could be a part of that because of the experience that I've had in not only the business world, but also knowing the people of Council Bluffs and being able to work with them and return the favor to learn the tourism industry, one that I was not familiar with. Did I cut all parts of the course? It was a long question. So yes, I'm very passionate about this. I will also say, I also understand as a small business person that you cannot wait for two weeks for a decision. And I've seen this happen. And that's probably the one thing that gives me the most heartburn is because that developer, two weeks, particularly in our climate, can be the difference between starting a project and it not being successful when it needs to come in on time and under budget, et cetera. So, and you know, just little things like having your bio on the council member webpage to put that kind of information out there so that when someone is looking at our city, they can see the kind of experience and background that our council brings to the table.
First part of your question, level of commitment to city council. I'm very excited at the opportunity to, this coming month, get to a point where I do have the requirement to get to City Hall every Monday. So I ran it two years ago. And one of the things that I did in that campaign is I made sure for the better part of probably a year before to make it to every council meeting. And I got to the point almost in that instance where even though I was in the crowd, I felt like, hey, I'm part of the council too. Okay, you guys want to know what my thoughts are? So at any rate, this last election cycle, I've been, you can now view things online. It works pretty simple. I like to pick up, not pick up rather, but you can get on as well, get the packets and go through everything. Also, late last year, I joined the planning commission that everyone's kind of been talking about earlier in the responses to this question. Being on the planning commission has been really interesting for me to see everything that kind of comes through. We get to look at it before it goes forward. I like to do that. We actually have a subcommittee that we have formed that we're getting together to kind of discuss this exact issue of excused versus unexcused in relation to our responsibility to that committee. But as a whole, to finish the first part of the question, my commitment to the city council, yes, I'm very excited to be able to come and to be at the meetings on Mondays, to be at the study sessions. I have lots of flexibility in my schedule that will allow that. And as many have said too, I had that discussion with my family unit, and that was something that we took into consideration before we started this run. My community involvement, the second part of your question, I'm involved in not only my church, but my wife's church. She goes to Community of Christ, and I go to St. Peter's Catholic Church. I stay involved with Boy Scouts of America. They do a yearly merit badge college out at Western. And I have a lot of fun. Usually, I'll teach a class, oftentimes it's cooking, or I'll have a registration. But I've always been active in scouts, and it's been really, really fun to go through. And now that I'm older, to be able to go back and help these young kids get merit badges and see them grow, get them on the path to Eagle that I took, and just to see what happens with their lives, knowing that I had a part of that. So I think it is important to have community involvement, and that's my take.
Okay. For the next question, do you think there should be a requirement that council members cannot physically miss more than a certain number of meetings each year? And why or why not?
Well, that issue actually came up earlier this year, and there were a variety of proposals. The one I didn't support was allowing first come, first served. I just, at the end of the day, didn't think that if, for example, I've missed once in eight years, so if I suddenly did need to miss one, and there were only two slots to miss it, and it's folks who generally don't attend much, and they've already taken it, well, then I'm the one who has account against me, even though I hardly ever miss. So I didn't support that proposal. I was open to the idea of putting in a requirement that held the responsibility to the individual. And I would continue to support that. I do think it's important that individuals be physically present as much as possible. When I rewrote, I referenced earlier rewriting our council rules for the first time since the war. And one of the requirements I put in there and got unanimous consent when I did that, by the way, it got unanimity in that project. And that project took about, oh, about 28, 29 hours, as I recall, to do all that drafting and to work with my colleagues on it. One of the requirements I put in was that for meetings that an individual might miss that are regularly scheduled, that they have to not only be heard contemporaneously, that is, both sides can hear the conversation, but they must be seen so that they can see what's going on, and that the other individuals would be able to see them. Because I think at the end of the day, it's important to not get into the habit of calling in from other places routinely. There will be times where individuals have to be away, that's understandable, but to not make the habit of it. So yes, if properly done, to directly answer your question, if properly done in a way that holds the individual accountable, I do think having to be physically present and not miss more than, say, two meetings in a calendar year, as an example, is the standard by which we should hold anyone who would hold this office.
So when we were rewriting our council procedures, I went out to look and see what other city councils across the state of Iowa and in other states did when it came to attendance. And I would tell you that in most councils, there is a requirement that you attend. The council would be the ones that would decide whether it was excused or unexcused. So after so many unexcused, and they were different, some were two years, or two meetings, some were three meetings. And I'm very much in favor of that. We didn't have support to do that. The other thing I wanted to say was, as we're going to use this new technology, I like that we're having people video conference into meetings. It's very hard when somebody's on the phone, you can't hear them. You don't feel like they're part of the conversation. The public doesn't really feel that that person's even there. You can't really even hear their vote. So having the video conferencing is wonderful. But the one piece I wanted in there that I wasn't able to get support for was that we still needed a forum in the room. I do not think that people, even with the use of technology, and we all use it, think it's a great idea just to have a bunch of computer screens on the council bench talking at you. Because the way it's set up literally right now, all five council members could be gone for a meeting and video conference in. So anybody in the room and anybody watching online would see nothing but monitors. I still want to go back and have that changed, but again, I brought the motion, did not have the support for that. I think we have to start holding our council members accountable for their attendance. And the reason is, is that that's what they were elected to do, is be there and represent you. I do realize that life gets in the way, and I do realize that family's important. And it may be that sometimes it's not the best time in your life to make the commitment. I certainly would not have made this commitment when my children were toddlers. I couldn't have possibly been able to guarantee you that I wouldn't be home with the same child. But I want to see young people serve, but I need to know that they're going to be there most of the time, not some of the time. So I would certainly be in favor of seeing some changes to attendance requirements.
I too would be in favor that the hospital boards that I serve on, there is an attendance requirement. In fact, they ask that you not miss two consecutive meetings because the continuity that is lost when you're missing those consecutive meetings. And I agree, we use a lot of technology for our meetings with Ni-HI because it was across the entire state. But there were many times when you'd have to ask a question several times to see if the person was really there. And it just happens when you're not physically in the room. I also feel that we have a responsibility to the people of Council Bluffs. There are individuals that regularly attend our council meetings, and I think that's great. And there are people that, and the last agenda item, you know, individuals to be heard, and they come up and speak to the council. And we still live in a day and age when people want to see your face and shake your hands and feel like you are listening to them. And I very much would be supportive of minimum requirements for attendance. I too raise the family. I will tell you, there were times when I wasn't certain my children knew who their mother was. But I will also tell you that as they grew up to be adults, they all worked very hard in their jobs, and they've gone on to be very successful individuals. So it is a delicate balancing act. It's tough. I have total empathy for those that are, have the young children that are involved with all of the activities. But I think that this is the job that you are making a commitment to. You owe it to the people of Council Bluffs. You're here to serve the people of Council Bluffs, and I think you need to take that seriously.
Obviously, you know, I think you should be at meetings, but I do like the availability of the new technologies and things. I do like the idea that if you're going to not be there to use the Skype or whatever it may be, use the video conferencing. That is nice. It is nice to be able to see someone and their body language and how they talk. And as you can tell, I use my hands a lot. So the same is true when folks come into the council chamber and ask questions. I've had through many meetings where it's good to be there to see, you know. On the subject, I guess, of missing things, it's a checks and balances, I would say. And the issue or the difference comes in, and again, as I discussed in the last answer, excused versus unexcused, and what is the determining factor of that. That is something that needs to maybe be more our topic of discussion, I guess. And then what is the, you know, the check and balance, or what is the fair and equitable number, you know, be a one or a two in a calendar year? Because again, as everyone else has already stated, you know, life and things do happen. But on the whole, yes, I believe it is good to attempt to be there. And if you can't be there, you know, to have it be excused and to be there via video conference or whatever else so you still can fulfill the requirements of your job. So.
It's always tough to have a phone up here, and I can agree with a lot of what's been said. So I take this very seriously. If elected, when elected, I don't know what the proverbic quorum is of what people expect you to say in this situation. When folks put you in office, they expect to be able to see you. I'm sure most of us have been on a conference call, and I have a lot of sympathy for the current council and the mayor when they have a conference call because someone's unable to physically attend. And it goes like every other conference call. You ask a question, and Jody, sympathy for you too. You ask a question, and then it just gets silence. And then you, "Oh, yeah, yep, yep, I'm good, I'm good." And that's not conducive to a positive experience. I don't think that's what the people are really putting you in office for. So as we spoke about in our last question, attendance is incredibly important. The boards I serve on have attendance requirements or have attendance requirements going into place. That takes sacrifice, but you also, I was raised to, if you make a commitment, you need to honor it. And all of us are making a commitment up here that we're going to represent the people of Council Bluffs to the best of our abilities, and that includes showing up for council meetings. Now, I do agree, as everyone else has, life gets in the way. So a common sense number that can be agreed upon for misses in a year would make a lot of sense. And hopefully, that's something that we can work towards. Because once the expectation is made, you know, if you miss anything more than this, then there will be ramifications. I would hope to see that things would change at that point.
Our time is till seven o'clock, and so I don't think we have a time for another question. I want to give you guys the appropriate time for your final statements. Roger asked that I read his final statement, his statement again, not the final statement, so I will read his statement, and then Sharon, you can get up with your final statement. Thank you to Network One, Two, and Three for putting on the forum. I received the invite to the forum one week ago today. I have a work commitment that was scheduled long before this was sent out to us that I was not able to reschedule on such short notice. When I first received the email, I called Trilla, the president of Network Three, to ask some questions about why such short notice, who was involved with the groups, and what these groups represent. She asked me to email her the information. I provided Jody with the emails if anyone would like to see them. Over the phone, she told me that she needed to be upfront with me, and of the three groups, two candidates were in two of the three groups, that this would not be a problem. I asked if she thought this would be fair, and she said absolutely. In my email, I asked for a list of the members of all three networks, and was it for the list of groups was not for public release. I found this to be a little unsettling. Why would a group put on a public event and forum to help the citizens learn about the candidates for city council and not tell us who is involved behind the event? To tell you a little bit about me and my campaign, I graduated from Yale in 2004 and graduated from Blair Cliff University in 2008. My family opened Sandow Brothers Sign Company in 1985 and is still in business today. I have married with two stepsons, Aiden and Cohen, and my wife Jenny, and I have a daughter named Jordan. I mentor with teammates. I ran my campaign in 2015 on investing in youth for our community and went out to become a mentor with teammates. Investing in our youth and keeping our kids here after graduation and having them come back after college is what will grow our tax base and instill a sense of pride in our community. I want the community to know that they can trust me, and I take the time to listen to their views, even if they are not the same as mine. I a hundred percent will not have the same views as all of the constituents, but we can disagree without being disagreeable. I will make, I will not make you feel as though because we disagree, your view isn't important as mine. As a small business owner, I know to get things done, I want our community to be a better place for my kids and my grandkids when I am gone. Being on city council is a great responsibility that I do not take lightly. I do my homework and am prepared. I listen to the constituents and businesses in our community. I do one of his best for Council Plus as a whole. When reelected, I will continue to work hard for the community and be the voice of people and the businesses of Council Plus, and I ask for your vote on November 5th.
Well, I have been honored to serve on the city council, and it truly has been a great experience. I've enjoyed every minute of it. It's a lot of work, but I truly enjoy the work. I think, a lot of you know that I originally said that I didn't think I would run again. And the main reason for that was a lot of what you hear, and that is the negativity and some of the nastiness that goes along in a campaign. And actually Nate Watson asked me, "If you could do the work without having to go through all of that, would you still want to do it?" And I said, "Well, yeah." He said, "Well, you're tougher than that. You can do that." So I thought, you know what, he's right. That's no reason to not want to continue on city council because I didn't want to go through another nasty campaign with all the social media and all the negatives that come with that. So I decided to do it again. And you know, I will serve on that council, and I will work for the community as long as they'll have me. I think that one more term truly would be enough. I don't think, I do believe in term limits. I believe after you've served for so long, it is good to bring in new blood. But I have so many projects I'm working on, so many things I want to see through to completion. I would truly appreciate your vote on November 5th so that I can continue with that work. Thank you.
I would truly appreciate your vote on November 5th as well. I would take this opportunity very seriously. I have been watching all of the moving parts and pieces since May, and I can tell you, because of my background and my experience, you do see people that are knowledgeable, that are prepared, that are ready to come to get the job done. And that is why I had made the decision that I have made and been vocal about it. I know we've been criticized because they think we're all going to vote the same. Well, if you know Nate, Sharon, and me, you know that that is pretty much a guarantee, that the three of us all are very strong-minded, strong-willed individuals and will not be swayed by what other people think, and that we will make our own decisions. I'm very excited about, and it was Nate's idea, to mention the Neighborhood Association grant. Again, if there is no clear indication to you of individuals that are here not because of the pay, not because of the glory, trust me, I've seen the glory that has been spewed in these past few weeks, but they're here to truly serve the people of Council Plus. The good news is, walking these neighborhoods, I have seen so many wonderful, beautiful neighborhoods that I didn't know existed. And so that's just been a treat in itself. But we've also had individuals that have come out and talked to us, seen us out, walking about. It's still important to the people of Council Plus that they see you and that you listen to them. So if you would vote for me, I promise you, I will do my very best, I will work my hardest like I have my entire life to serve the people of Council Plus. Thank you.
Thank you guys for having us tonight. It was a really good forum. Actually, the questions were a little different than I thought they would be, but all in all, they were good. Good points of discussion, and the discussion went cordially. I am very excited for November 5th. I would really appreciate all of your votes on November 5th. I like to get active into things and watch things grow, as I stated earlier, with youth. You know, I have a small business, growing that. In college, I more or less grew a swim program from nothing with no above hands in it. You know, over time, I want to see Council Plus move forward. I really would like to grow, again, for my kids, for your kids, for my family, for your family, just in general, to grow it in all aspects, in size, in businesses, in economy, everywhere. All in all, there's lots that can be done. There's been some discussion of, you know, getting fresh eyes on things and fresh blood, and I'd like to be that for everyone. So I would appreciate your vote on November 5th. Thank you for tonight.
Thank you to the Women's Network for hosting this, and I didn't know it existed before this, so thank you for the education. And like I said in the introductions, thank you all for coming out. It means a lot to come to a forum. I usually get really nervous and wonder, you know, like, I hope I don't say anything stupid. But it feels better to have a room full of people than 10 people in a room. So I greatly appreciate the fact that all of you are here, and all of you care enough about the process and educating yourself. Like Sharon said, not on Facebook or anything like that, but actually going out and seeing face to face, and I really do appreciate that. I imagine all of us are very excited for next week and maybe a little bit ready for it by this point. It is exciting. It's exciting and it's truly humbling to be in the company of this group of people, and Roger as well. So like everyone else, I hopefully ask for your vote on November 5th. If you have questions for me, I'll stick around for a couple minutes after, but more than anything, thank you all for being here.
Well, first of all, I want to offer my genuine thanks to the sponsor this evening as well as to the audience, and say that, and I believe I practiced what I preached about, what I'm about to say. I believe one of the greatest things that we as a society have done and still have a lot of work to do in is the empowerment of women. I do think that's important, to have a voice in our community of everyone, not just those who would historically have a view or a vote, indeed literally, to have a vote, and others who did not. I think it's also important, this election, to, the optics of having a council that may lose nearly all of its women is troubling, and to lose that voice and to lose one and to lose the opportunity of another, I think would be a shame, and the lack of diversity in our community that I would not support. I think it's important to have those voices around the table. And at the end of the day, I have been, and you know, this is a new thing for me, to be really honest, and my niece is going to laugh, I'm sure, but I've never been accused of not having my own strong opinion. Probably too much, I've been accused of having too strong an opinion, and that's fair criticism, often I do. But I'm really passionate about what I think, and I do my own thinking, and will always continue to do so, whether I'm on council or not after next week for another term. I think at the end of the day, you need to elect individuals that you trust have the temperament. You're not always going to agree with every vote we might take. That's understandable. When you get two people together, you're always going to disagree on something. That's what happens when people think. But I think at the end of the day, you want to elect people who do good things and have your best interests at heart. I'm happy to agree to donate the significant increase in council salary, $5,000 a year, for, and along with Council Member Sharon White, Council Candidate Deb Bass, that'd be $60,000 while requesting council term to give back to the true heroes in our community. And I want to continue to cut the red tape on all the revenue of our laws, they're much too long. I ask for your vote on the 5th. Thank you very much.
I'd like to first thank you all for being here tonight. I wish we could have gotten through all of your questions because you had some good ones, but we'd be here till midnight if we allowed that. I'd also like to thank you candidates for showing up and giving us your opinions on these questions. I think that they're going to stick around for a little bit if anybody has any questions one-on-one.
I think we need to give Jody a round of applause.
I'm sorry. 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 I don't think you were joking. I've gotten a little bit. I'm here all so far. I'm not a good person. I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
KCCI 8 News at 5 starts right now. Oh. Plus, meet the man vying for the third congressional district seat while he's running against Republican incumbent David Young. Holder is trying to elbow his way past the more established Republican incumbent David Young and Democratic challenger Cindy Axny. KCCI's Marcus McIntosh introduces us to Libertarian Brian Holder.
This has been a long time in coming for me. This is the third time I've run for this congressional district.
Brian Holder first campaigned for the third district congressional seat in 2014, again in 2016, and now in 2018. This debate with his opponents at KMA Radio, he says, is a first.
I decided to run just because I've always been a student of history, been interested in government and how it works.
Born in Omaha, Nebraska, he grew up in the Council Bluffs area with a younger sister, an X-ray technician mother, and a father who was a school principal.
I was raised by a follower of Coach Bobby Knight, you know, the general. My dad was very strict, and he gave me that strict upbringing. I didn't screw up at school, because obviously, being a school principal, he would find out about it.
He says he kept his nose clean, focusing on his schoolwork and athletics.
Went to college on a basketball scholarship at Iowa Western.
But a degenerative disc disease in his six, seven frame put an end to any hoop dreams. He stayed on scholarship by playing baseball for the Revere's for two years, then went on to Bellevue University and a degree in psychology before earning his Juris Doctorate from Creighton University Law School. For the last two decades, he has worked in the family photography business and also calls himself a citizen journalist.
I filmed town halls. I filmed about 50 high school basketball games every winter. I filmed about 16 soccer matches for the local high school kids, and I put this content online for free for the community.
Holder knows his end game in the third congressional district is not a win in the November election. A victory for him would be to get five or six percent of all the votes cast.
I don't see it going much above that, just because there's not enough people letting, willing to let go of the two-party system.
Holder is a campaign of one. He does not ask for votes. He has no budget for TV or radio advertising, and one campaign sign that is in his own front yard. He does not take campaign contributions, saying that would stray him away from the campaign he is determined to run on his own.
I could go out and start talking to my friends and family and form a committee and start collecting campaign contributions, but that's a path that I haven't wanted to go down.
For Commitment 2018, Marcus McIntosh, KCCI 8 News, Iowa's News Leader.
And coming up tonight at 9 and 10, we will hear Holder's priorities for the third congressional district.
This is Iowa's News Leader, KCCI 8 News at 9 on MeTV.
The Libertarian candidate for Iowa's third congressional district has a one-man campaign. Brian Holder does everything himself, sticking to the Libertarian Party belief of self-ownership and self-determination. KCCI's Marcus McIntosh spent some time with Holder, who says he is a strong believer that more people should be involved in politics.
The initial congressional districts only had 30,000 people in it. Now we have 760,000 people in our district.
Brian Holder says it is far too much responsibility for one person to represent three-quarter of a million Iowans.
At some point, we need to add some more seats. I don't know what that number of seats is, or how many constituents David Young or Cindy or myself should represent.
Holder has had enough of cutting back congressional districts, saying it's time to add more. He thinks that is a big stumbling block when it comes to others who may want to dip their toe into the political pool.
I think any citizen that wants to run for Congress should be able to do it, or at least attempt to do it.